It's twenty six, twenty twenty five. Meeting to order and we will entertain motions.
I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussions regarding current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law, employment history of a particular person or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person.
I second.
Moved by Adam, second by Karen. Question, debate, discussion? We will call the question all in favor. The motion passes. Thank you all very much. We anticipate being back at seven P M. For the public part of our meeting. We'll see you all shortly. First asking my colleagues, are there any modifications to the agenda? Nearing none, we'll continue on to agenda item four point one. I do not believe anyone has signed up to speak. No, so there is no public comment for this evening. And I always say it, that means I hope there's no board responses. They'll bring us to the consent agenda and we will entertain motions.
I move to approve all consent agenda items listed in the consent agenda, considerations of accounts, personnel report, students, and minutes of previous meeting as presented.
Second.
Moved by Adam, second by Jacob. Questions, conversations, debate, discussion? To Dr. Blaylock, should I assume that the considerations of account were reviewed during the Facilities and Finance Committee?
That's correct.
And everyone's good with the bids and everything else that are around here? It was an interesting, I think this is the first time we had disposal of surplus equipment and we had photos. So thank you for those. That was helpful rather than a list. That was good. And if there are no other questions or discussion, we'll call the question all in favor. The motion passes. Fantastic. That will bring us on to agenda items nine point one, the superintendent report. Dr. Brown.
Thank you for the opportunity and no long report tonight other than we've had new teachers in today. We're in active preparation for the opening of school next week. Other educators are going to be coming back this week as well. So looking forward to welcoming young people back this next, next week or so. And excited and a special thank you to all the folks who have been in buildings already prepping. So looking forward to the, the next superintendent report will be much longer as we share how the opening has gone. Yeah.
Well, thank you to our crew of folks who helped get our schools in order. I've been visiting a couple of schools. I know there's still some work that needs to be done between now and the start of school. And appreciate all the time and energy they'll put into appreciate what our teachers have been doing, our food service folks. And I think I can speak on behalf of all caregivers and say Wednesday cannot come soon.
There we go.
There we go.
Like that.
Uh, next agenda item would be our school district business and we are set to have a conversation and possible action steps on a capital project that we have been in some discussion for probably over a year now. Uh, but here we find ourselves and I am, is Chris going to join us as well as Dr. Bryman? Is that who's?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
And Dr. Brown, um, because folks will start paying attention right around this time. Didn't know if it is good for you or Dr. Black or whoever to just write a little bit of context for this conversation about how we got here or I don't know if that's going to be part of it. Why are we having a conversation about the capital project?
Oh, yeah, yes, of course, of course. So, um, you know, as a district, obviously we're concerned about maintaining a, a healthy and productive environment for our, our teachers, our staff, our students. And this is part of that. So we need to make investments in our physical plant to ensure that we fulfill our educational mission in a healthy, safe way. And so, uh, Chris is going to guide us through that process.
Thanks, Karen. And thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Um, I'll frame this discussion. Well, you needed the mics because you were going to give this presentation. Thanks. So this conversation is continuing on from various conversations that, that we have had over, uh, as Sean alluded, though the significant amount of months. So hopefully there's nothing, you know, terribly new or surprising in this. We're seeking confirmation to move forward with this, uh, with this capital project. We'll go through the scope. Um, but we've reviewed, if not this identical scope, very, very similar scopes, scopes of work at um, the Board of Education meetings, at Facility Committee meetings, at monthly meetings that are held, uh, with ICSD, Tetra Tech Architects and Engineers, and your construction manager, campus construction management. Um, where we, you know, get into, into a lot of the details and discuss this. So um, tonight we're seeking approval to move forward and I'll outline some of the next steps as we go through this. We'll review the scope of work and I'm happy to entertain questions um, as we go. Uh, but I'll, I'll just kind of go through it. Please, um, you know, wave at me or kick me or something if you want to chime in or say something or ask questions. So we'll start with schedule. And the vertical red dashed line is showing us, you know, near the end of August. We're hoping to confirm the scope, uh, with the board tonight. Couple of the next steps would include a conversation to, um, just organize the logistics around the bond referendum, uh, language. And for that, you have a, a suite of professionals that helps you with that. You have bond counsel, you have your attorney, you have, um, your architect, construction manager and uh, fiscal advisors as well, um, that comes together as a group, reviews the scope of work, um, and determines those, uh, the referendum language. You will, um, hopefully approve those, um, those resolutions at the September twenty third meeting. There is a requirement that um, those resolutions are adopted by the school board at least forty five days before the actual public vote. So this gives us, you know, plenty of time to do that within the required timeframe. We also will begin the communications to the public. Okay. So that's a separate piece of work that includes, you know, in the past, it has included, um, public sessions. It has included digital outreach. As it has included presence at, you know, certain events. So we'll look at the schedule, um, and dive into that uh, soon after, you know, after hopefully, uh, we have direction to move forward after this evening. Uh, we're targeting a December month public vote date. So any questions about that so far? So here's an overview and we'll go into a little more detail on, on each of these items, but this is the scope of work that, um, we have been, we've been reviewing and crafting over recent months that seem to have a lot of support. Um, so I'll, I'll dive into that. Uh, one of the larger items on here is roofing. So the roofs in, uh, that have been identified, uh, to have the highest need are at Boynton, B J M, and at Caroline. And we have some square footages figured out and the vintages of the roofs, um, which are, you know, starting to exhibit leaks. Uh, we'll say that for, for a lot of these scope items, we look at several different factors to determine need. One of those is just age of the system or the component. One is demonstration of failure in some way. Um, another is warranty period as an indication of um, exposure by the district to a system that, that might fail without a lot of protection. And so, you know, the roofs in this case sort of check all those boxes. I'd like to go back for a moment and cover a point, um, that I didn't make earlier, which is to the public vote. I want to clarify that when you seek authorization from the public to um, approve bonding capacity up to a certain amount, that is what the voters are giving you authorization to do. It's not that you suddenly, you know, go out and borrow all that money. It is not that, you know, you have that sitting in a bank account somewhere. Um, and as, as Ben can share, certainly, um, part of the typical strategy is you only seek uh, bonding capacity for the projects as you move through them, right? So it's, um, you know, scheduled out. And you have advisors to do that in the most, uh, prudent way. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear in terms of, you know, some folks think of it as like a line of credit almost that, you know, you have a capacity. You don't necessarily need to, to, um, borrow up to that capacity. Um, but we've identified certain scope items and arrived at a number, um, to, to have some uh, specificity with the number that, uh, we're proposing and, um, and what that, what that would cover. So thanks. Okay. Back to roofing. Okay. Science rooms.
You and John? Sure, yeah. I'm Dan Bryman. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Operations. I just wanted to share about the science classrooms. Oh, as you can see in the pictures, these are the existing cabinet. It's the existing cabinetry from over fifty years ago. Uh, we would like to renovate, um, these cabinets and these science classrooms. Uh, it has deteriorate, deteriorated. Um, and I can say I was a student at Duitt Middle School and it has not changed, uh, since it, it's still the same, uh, vintage color as well. So, um, uh, we'd also like to upgrade the gas to meet code requirements and have a safety shut off. This will help us participate in more, uh, curriculum work involving, uh, uh, gas as well. Um, and we'd also like to support, um, the, you know, amazing STEM uh, initiative that's happening over at the high school and have other science classrooms that feed into what we're doing at Ithaca High School. And, uh, so we're looking at six classrooms at Duitt, three at Boynton, uh, three at Boynton had already been done, uh, had been renovated um, approximately six years ago. Is that correct?
Sounds about right.
Okay. Good.
Thanks. Fire alarms, right? So we're talking about some real important infrastructure. Two buildings that we've identified, again, uh, due to age of the system, uh, reported, um, interruptions to instruction. Uh, our Ithaca High School and South Hill, these are two buildings where part of the system is an older analog system. Part of the system, especially after some of the renovations are a new, um, code compliant uh, digital system. Um, and so having those two systems, uh, in the same building are, uh, create some challenges.
I should add that we have had, the communication of these two systems has been difficult for us. And with the old analog system, if we have a fire alarm, it's hard for us to identify where the location is and pinpoint that quickly. And it ca, it can cause, uh, students to wait outside longer. It, it can cause longer instructional interruptions. Um, we believe if we had an addressable system, now the addressable system will tell us exactly where, um, you know, which fire alarm is going off, we can get to it quickly, we can shut it down, and we can have less interruptions. We believe that this will, uh, be better for Ithaca High School and for South Hill.
So under wellness, we're talking about nursing suites, um, pretty much throughout the district. There was a significant renovation done at Ithaca High School just a couple of years ago. So that one's in, in pretty good shape. Uh, but the main, uh, issues to address there are ADA, that's Americans with Disabilities Act. So handicap accessibility uh, for those. There's also, um, some storage and just efficiency improvements that can be made uh, to allow the, the, um, you know, the, your great staff to support wellness throughout the district with those, with those facilities. Uh, more specifically at B J M, uh, that's a relatively old building and there has been, you know, some settlement, uh, especially in, in this part of town that, you know, used to be a swamp a couple hundred years ago. Um, so that's not unusual. We see that, you know, on a lot of your buildings actually with some cracks forming. Um, in the nursing suite there, you know, there is some, uh, some cracking of walls that we want to address. There have been some temporary measures done to stabilize some of the walls, but this is a longer term uh, solution that would address, uh, address the movement that we're seeing there. We have discussed H V A C at Ithaca High School and Boynton Middle School over a few recent meetings. Uh, so thanks for your patience and going over that a few times to get to, uh, decision and providing us direction on a, on a complicated issue. This is to provide, so in, in the slide, tons is a turn, is a unit of mechanical engineering. So, uh, it speaks to the size and the amount of cooling that is, um, intended to be provided by the system that we're proposing to build in this project. What that system does is provide the cooling to a lot of the mechanical equipment that many of you may see being installed in Ithaca High School right now and over subsequent summers. So there are a couple of pieces to this. Right now you're doing the unit ventilators that, you know, the individual uh, pieces of equipment. This project, this piece of the project that we're talking about provides the cooling backup to that. The reason we're talking about, and we've had this conversation now, is that there was a plan to utilize the Cornell Lake Source Cooling System to expand the capacity. You currently have about four hundred tons of cooling that you've been using since, uh, the late nineteen nineties, uh, through an agreement with Cornell. Uh, we were planning and we're far along in discussions with Cornell, uh, to expand that system to cover the whole high school and then, um, they, their permit came under scrutiny from the D E C. And so they, they had to in turn, uh, let the team know that they weren't going to be able to expand the cooling offering. So, uh, so we're pivoting and this is the solution, uh, that we came up with that pivot.
Okay, athletics. Um, so I've talked a few times about bleachers. Um, just gonna add, as you can see some of the, by some of the pictures, we have a section because the bleachers aren't manufactured anymore, we have a section right now that we're using for parts. Um, because that's the only place we can get the parts at this time. Um, unfortunately, what that does is it doesn't provide enough seating for a pep rally or for large athletic events. Um, you can also see we have, uh, failed handrails in multiple locations. Um, that has to, that has to be, or I'm, excuse me, that's a safety issue, of course, with people walking up and holding on to it um, as well. Um, as you can see on the picture on the right, the structure and the frame of the bleachers and the seats coming out is actually bent. So we have a hard time getting it in and getting it out, which takes our, um, our staff a lot of extra time, uh, to do. And then also there's numerous, um, hazards where people can get their clothes stuck in, uh, their pinch hazards where they get stuck, but there's also seats that have sunk down. Uh, so we would, we, we really do need to replace all the bleachers here. If you look in the middle of the, the slide, there's also the Boynton, uh, floor. We have had water intrusion coming from underneath the floor as well as, um, by the door as well. So we, we will need to replace that as well and do some gradient work.
Floor abatement, another exciting subject, but really important to providing safe and, um, high quality facilities for students. Um, there are a number of areas in Ithaca High School that have, um, what we call vinyl asbestos tile, V A T. Um, it's floor tile or the mastic, which is the, the black in this picture glue that is adhering the tiles to the floor. Um, so there's a variety of combinations of whether it's the tile or the mastic, but you have, um, asbestos containing material in, in a lot of buildings as many, many buildings, school buildings across New York State have. So it's not necessarily a problem if it is contained. What we're seeing though in some areas is some of those materials are starting to degrade. So when you see, you know, pieces coming off, that's a clear sign that, um, you, you want to address those items. Uh, your staff does a good job of trying to encapsulate that and keep that under, under control. Um, and we see a good amount of wax on this floor, keeping that stuff in place. Um, but we're looking to, to, um, to really get, get in there and remove some of the flooring, uh, and that mastic. So that's at Ithaca High School. We've also identified a number of areas um, at Caroline, but there are many different buildings, uh, across the district that, that are opportunities for this. Uh, the map at the right just shows, um, an abatement survey of the flooring materials, right? So um, there's been a lot of attention paid to assessing, you know, where the materials are, where they aren't, what areas, uh, would need to be addressed. Next up is Kyuga Heights paving. So if you've been out there, um, you might see, I'll, I'll give you a technical term that I may, I may have mentioned in one of the previous meetings. Uh, the bottom left-hand photo exhibits a pattern that we call dead alligatoring. So you can use that term to, to sound, um, you know, very knowledgeable about this, but it's a, it's a typical pattern of, of, of asphalt failure. And so when you see that, you know that that's breaking down at a level um, that, you know, you start to see pieces, you know, coming out of it. And it's just a good indication that, that asphalt is ready for replacement. Um, you can see some of the patching, uh, your facilities department has done a great job keeping it going as, for as long as, as it, it has been going. Um, but when, again, when you see patches like that, it's another indication that there's something happening that, you know, would be addressed, um, with a, with a full replacement. The picture at the bottom is a, is a drain that's, you know, just has some water intrusion. And so you see that hole in the front of the picture. That's not what we like to see. We want to see the water going into the grate, not, you know, bypassing the grate. Um, so that's, that's some improvements there at Kyuga Heights. Playgrounds. We've talked a lot as well about playgrounds. Um, some of the, the, um, criteria that we use to assess what playground, um, to assess the needs of different playgrounds, um, include of course, age of the facility, what, um, what damage, you know, is being happened or just way normal wear and tear. And kids are out on the playground being physical. And so this, this equipment sees a lot of, um, a lot of wear and tear, uh, as you would imagine from kids. So in, you know, in the middle, you can see structures that just, you know, over time, uh, wear down and parts, you know, fall off. Uh, so we look also at the density of use. Uh, so we have a couple of pictures here at, at B J M. So that's a location that has, um, a lot of students, but also a lot of community use as well.
I would just add, you can see in the picture that we're missing a number of parts as the, uh, age of the playground. Because of the age of the playground, sometimes it's hard for us to find to replace these parts. So that's just a net, similar to like the bleachers, basically. We, 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 we have a hard time finding replacement manufactured parts, um, as it ages, if that makes sense. And in the infield picture, you can also see, um, that, uh, there, there isn't a lot of playground equipment. So that could be, that could be an opportunity to add a few, um, things that's maybe age appropriate. I believe that's for, um, uh, pre, for younger children. Okay.
Bathrooms, you know, the, the hits keep coming. Want to talk about?
For bathrooms, we've talked in O E C M of, of a lot of short-term and long-term solutions right now. Uh, short-term, we're looking at privacy strips. We're looking at combating the odor by using lots of different products, but also looking at epoxy that has come out of a lot of our, um, conversations. Um, also, i- if you look at B G M, we have a hundred-year-old marble in the, in the bathroom figuring out, and that's very, it's very porous material. So figuring out what to do with that. Um, because it's probably not going to help. But so we're looking at, uh, short-term that we can do with facilities, but also long-term that we can do, um, through a capital project as well. Um, in terms of long-term and privacy, we're looking at, um, uh, dividers that provide more privacy for students um, in the stalls, because this was built obviously, uh, for older children and, um, more age-appropriate, uh, sinks and items like that.
Yep. There is a piece of E V infrastructure, um, in this as well. This has been focused quite a bit to just providing some critical infrastructure. So this is the transformers, conduits, switch gears. Really just some like very basic electrical equipment and conduits to set you up for the long-term to be able to add chargers over time. This would include, you know, a, a budget for a certain number of level three chargers. Technology's changing quite a bit. We, you know, estimate it every couple of months and the, the numbers are, you know, are very different. So we've just kind of established a budget. Uh, this will, um, support the charging of the buses that you already have in a more efficient manner. Uh, currently you're charging them with, uh, just less powerful chargers, uh, because we're working with the existing electrical capacity of that bus garage, which was built, I think in nineteen sixty-nine. Um, so upgrades there, um, as well, uh, another technical item, the H V A C control systems. So these are the systems that tell all the individual units what to do and when and how much. And so those digital systems, um, are aging out in some buildings. In some cases, they are uh, pneumatic systems. So there's air being blown through tubes to tell valves when to open and close. Uh, so installing modern digital systems, um, in those buildings has an impact on energy efficiency. Um, if you taught in Boynton or Duitt, you know, some years ago, before we did that project, you would probably have experienced uh, interesting temperatures at, at times of years, we'll say. Uh, and so that's uh, much more under control now and you, you can have control over, um, energy usage as well, more than you did. So we're looking at Bell Sherman, B J M, Kyuga Heights, um, and Caroline as the first, uh, crop of buildings that, uh, that, that are most in need.
The only thing I would add is we've been told of really long lead times for transformers.
That's correct.
So getting ahead of that, um, would make a, a lot of sense. Uh, well, how long were the lead times we were hearing?
Um, we've experienced a year and a half plus, uh, from when you order a transformer to when it shows up on your site.
Yeah, we just purchased one. It was about a year to get it.
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, so still procurement issues, um, that we've been experiencing since COVID.
Yep.
So supply chain still, um, being affected by that. And again, this is just a repetition of the slide beforehand, uh, at the beginning. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain them, um, and just want to repeat that we're looking for approval. If this, uh, this capital project meets with your approval to continue on to the next steps.
I gotta leave early, so I want to get this question in quickly. Um, the fire alarms, and that was on the fire alarm ADA slide. I just want some clarity, you know, the, I don't want to call them clocks because it was such a blow up, but you know, the systems that we have had put into our schools that include the clocks. How do the fire alarms differ from that upgrade?
They're different systems.
Okay. And can you just, just for folks listening, can you just explain what's separate and different about them and why it's important to have both?
So fire alarm systems include detection. So it's the little, I don't know, there's some around here. Um, little, um, ceiling, typically ceiling mounted, um, detection devices like you might have in your home. That's what senses the smoke. It also has notification devices. That's the thing that makes noise or flashes, um, in the ca, in the case of school. Um, and the panels that control that and the panels that first responders would go to, to figure out, you know, what is under alarm, where do I need to go to do that? So that is a system that, um, operates independently from other communication systems. There are code requirements for the, the quality of that system and how it needs to operate and how it needs to be tested and all those pieces. So that's the system. Um, the other, other systems in the building include, uh, more and more, a combination unit like a box you might see on the wall that includes various functions. It includes timekeeping function. It includes a P A function. It can include emergency messages, scrolling across the screen if you have that sort of model that supports that, um, that type, type of screen information. Um, so that's a different system than the fire alarm system.
There is absolutely no connection between the two.
And yet it bears repeating that the second one you were talking about is a safety communication network, which happens to include the ability to tell time.
That's correct.
Yes. Yeah, I, I had some follow-up question on that. Those are my, my questions is the fire alarm system. Um, because it's five point one million to upgrade it. Was it the right number? And I'll, I'll, yeah, while you look for, I'll continue. And I'll, I, I heard the, the one benefit, maybe I missed it, was that And I'll, I, I heard the, the one benefit, maybe I missed it, was that um, we can get kids back into classes quicker. And, and what I'm trying to like quantify in my mind is how often we have fire alarms, how much time we talk, is it extra like two minutes? Times, you know, X amount of, so that's what I'm wondering, like for five point one million dollars, what are we getting? And could that money be better spent elsewhere? Like if it's talking about like life safety, we're talking about saving lives. And then it's different, but if it's time in the classroom, I'd, I'd kind of want to understand how much time are we talking about saving for five point one?
I think it's a both end. It's life safety. We have had significant instructional interruptions where students have been out of class. For fifteen, twenty, even thirty minutes if we can't. Sometimes the fire department has come here and they cannot locate exactly where the fire, uh, smoke head rather, sorry. Where the smoke head is. I think we've gone beyond thirty minutes. Um, this past summer, I think we've had um, four or five times. Uh, just in the summer where we haven't been, we haven't been able, students are, we're not in the building, but we haven't been able to find. Where the source is, and it's taken us considerable time. I think that's not just an instructional interruption, but that's also um, you know, uh, uh, we're losing valuable time. Um, uh, if it's, if we're having a hard time with it communicating properly, if that makes sense.
It, it does. And what, what I'm hearing, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm following. Sounds like faulty heads, you know, like that happens in our buildings too, like something goes off. There's not an actual fire or, or an issue, but you know, you're trying to determine like where is this thing so we can shut it off? Is that what we're talking about? Or there's been like situations where there's been a fire and we can't determine where the fire is? Because that's where the life safety comes in versus like a technical issue, because it's almost sounds like it's solving a technical issue, which is then getting the kids in the classroom more. And I'm just trying to like fully understand what the problem is that we're solving for five point one million.
I think it's both.
Yeah.
We've had times where students have set it off. And we've had to find where that is um, in bathrooms. That's typically in bathrooms.
Yeah.
Um, and there has been um, some reason for it going off. Um, so um, I think there's, there, that, well, I don't think, I know there's life safety issues. And there's um, a, a lot of time trying to figure out where it is, which um. In, and we don't know whether it's emergency sometimes or not. We don't know if it's a dirty smoke head. Or if it's somebody in the bathroom.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? I don't need to, I, yeah, go ahead.
And back to that, I mean, this is, we're going from an analog to a digital system. And a system that's nearing the end of life.
Yes.
So at some point, we need to replace this system.
Yeah.
And that number is only going up. I think I saw this number ten years ago and it was not that much. And I knew uh, we could push this down the road another five years or so, but so this is a big number. It's only going to go up and it's something we need to replace at some point very soon.
So the system's also to the point of, of failure because it's, it's so, that's, that's a different, I didn't hear that.
I want to, yeah, maybe, maybe I didn't say that clearly, but in my six, I think, six years with facilities. We've had times where we've had to come uh, replace communication wires from one building to the next. Uh, specific, we had to replace a very long communication wire from the, from the gym uh, all the way to the counselor suite. Um, and we um, as to Dr. To Dr. Brown's point, as it ages. The, that communication is certainly breaking down. And when um, the JCI technician comes out, he, he, you know. Well, I'm, you know, he, he says it's time for us to, to come into the digital age.
Yeah.
Yeah. To, can I just also add to Todd's point though? Let's also have a conversation about the reality of what we're asking for.
Yeah.
We're not asking if we go to the slide with the total number on it. Uh, this would not be projects that would all be undertaken in a single year.
Right.
This would be in phases.
Yeah.
And so this one sounds like it has a little bit more emergency if we're talking about the possibility of fire and locating where it may be identified. And with that being said, there still may be times if this is in phase two for us to explore more of what Todd's question may be about. Is this the most financially expedient approach to take at this point in time? I hear end of life. I hear significant safety concerns. I hear better communication. The fact that we have this problem before with other systems of both analog and digital does not make much sense.
Yeah.
And the board would have an opportunity to have a conversation about prioritizing. Which if, and which of these would take priority in the first phase to be able to finance? And so I just want to make sure that the community knows that as well, that there is an opportunity to continue to vet some of the projects. To decide if this is what we're going to be spending our money on.
Yeah.
Um, before we have to put any plans into SCD, before we have to commit to the cost that may be incurred. And more importantly, the benefits that we may get on the flip side around student safety and sustainability is that, I hope that's fair.
Yeah.
Said Sam.
I, I would also say this is not just Ithaca High School, it's also South Hill. I don't know if you wanted to add the South Hill fire alarm.
Uh, yeah, so this represents over three hundred thousand square feet. So it's approaching a third of your district. Right? So it is a lot of work. So there's, there's a high number to that. Um, to put a finer point on safety concerns, you're first responder and you show up to uh, an alarm. And you have a zone system, which is the old analog system, you know, somewhere in this zone, something is sensing something, right? If you, if you show up and you have a modern digital system, you know exactly which head is going off. And so you can get to that location um, more quickly. And so that's, I think, part of the reason that these systems have been improving over time. So it does actually, it adds that measure of safety.
I appreciate the question.
Once we, once we find the analog, it's not, it's bad. It actually takes us some time to put it back up too. Um, it can take us considerable time to, to, to get it back online.
We get on the wrong, yeah.
Okay, okay.
No, I mean, I said quick math. So three hundred thousand square feet, it's twenty hours a square foot. That seems like a lot.
These are numbers that we work with campus construction management that are supported by bids that they're monitoring uh, throughout the market. So it's a market twice. That's, that's what we use.
I mean, just, just for context, I, I know it's different, like we, we just wire, we're wiring up a building right now. We're like twenty eight dollars a square foot. And that's all the rough, that's all electrical, including like fixtures and stuff. And that's also like all of our low voltage, security, fire alarm system. And then, you know, lights, switches, all the wires. And I know it's different because I know it's cool, but um, yeah, I was just. Just pointing to that out there.
I think you, you, you should underscore your point. Um, building in a school environment with state ed approvals and all the different codes I've had to learn. It's significantly different from building a home in your line of work and others, and our community needs to understand that. Because these numbers are bigger by design.
And, and one, one good thing to um, realize is that. It, we had Travis report at the facilities and finance committee last week. And we went out to vote in two thousand nineteen and had a referendum. And there is some excess because maybe bids shifted here and there, the dollar amount was less. That we will be able to utilize to other areas, not necessarily these. So um, and going to these monthly OACM meetings, what I've realized is that. There's always room for shifts and we accommodate that and we know that where um, that our staff is doing their due diligence. And funding everything and making sure everything is appropriately funded. And just for information for the community, especially as we welcome new families to this community. And they might not be aware of this process of us going on and talking about. A capital project and, and in prior years, we've had it around the budget vote in May. But we've decided this year we wanted to separate it and have it at a later time. Other school districts do that. We're not the only ones to take this on. So we are looking, if we vote on this as a board, that we will go to the community to vote in December, December ninth.
To underscore Karen's point, if folks want to take a look at last December, a number of our regional neighbors uh, had a December capital project. Uh, I want to say eight or nine of them at the very least within the southern tier in central New York. Uh, that I'm aware of, and we can definitely pull a list for new board members to get an idea of the ways in which other boards have been going out for capital projects as well. Dr. Blilak, you were gonna say something.
Well, I, I mean, I think it's mostly been said, but I, it bears repeating. I mean, these are investments. In um, health and wellness. These are investments in productive instructional spaces. Uh, and these are investments that as stewards of the public's assets that we need to make to maintain the value of this property. You know, you let roofs go and buildings get worse. So, you know, these are the kind of maintenance things that a good homeowner would do to their home. And, you know, we're the homeowners here, and these are the things I think that the public is asking us to do. So uh, for all three of those reasons, I think this is a reasonable uh, ask. I think this is what the community would expect of us to do, you know, as responsible managers of these assets. Now, I think there's some good questions, Todd. I think your questions you're asking about when you get into the details of, you know, one of the projects on here. You know, are there adjustments or better ways? And the answer may in many cases be yes. But I just reminded the public, what we're asking for here is authorization to get a line of credit to pursue these projects. And then as each of these projects comes before us, we'll then dive into, you know, some of the details. And there, there may be adjustments or alterations or ways to do a little bit better. What we're asking for here, I think, though, is, is a line of credit to do what is responsible. For again, you know, health and wellness, uh, effective, effective learning spaces and what we do to preserve the taxpayers' value.
Are we going to have a conversation about financing?
Yes, we have someone being invited to talk.
I'd want to start into that if that's.
Yeah.
Already coming as well.
Yeah.
Well, before you vote, before you run away, not just messing. Other questions about the facilities aspect of it, and we'll get to the finance aspect of it in a minute.
Yeah, I mean, I, I had a couple more questions. Um, the, the nine science classrooms. Um, the, it was six point nine million for those. Um, and again, like I see that number and I'm like. I, I, I'm trying to figure out like, what does that come out to a cost per square foot? Because that's like how I can like rationalize it in my brain, because that's what I'm used to. And if it's like, to me, it's like you can, I, I, I'm pricing that maybe like nineteen hundred dollars a square foot. And it just, I, I, so I'm not understanding like what, what, what is included in that six point nine million? Like, are we building a new science building? Or are we just like renovating the interiors? If it's renovating the interior. I mean, I would think it's a hundred fifty hours a square foot. And again, like, I don't know, so I know, maybe I'm missing things, but I just want to get a better understanding because it's a really big number for only nine classrooms.
So like Dr. Brown said earlier, um. The quality of construction, the longevity of construction is to um, have materials that last with thousands of. Well, hundreds and hundreds of middle schoolers. Um, the costs that you see include a number of other factors. That's not a construction cost. That's a total project cost. So what's in that? Estimates that the market has determined are the costs based on experience. We escalate those costs into the future because we're not doing the work now. We're doing it in a couple of years. So we make conservative assumptions about construction cost escalation because we want you to be in a position. Of getting bids and it's less than these numbers. That's the position we want you to be in. So when you see a number here, it's intentionally conservative. It also includes other project costs, fees, uh, the other things that you need to do as a district to actually bring a construct, a construction project. Um, to design it, to get approvals, to bring it to bid, to pay prevailing wage for the workers that work on this project. Right? So there are a lot of factors that contribute to the number. Um, so if you just are doing the math, um, is that the construction number per square foot? No, it's not.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars per classroom. And I mean, we're not, we're not talking about foundations or roofs or walls. It's like, and again, I'm, I'm just struggling with that. Because it's, and, and I know there's a lot of factors that go into it, but I mean, you can build. A s- you know, a sixty story skyscraper in New York City for that price per square foot, like legit.
Build what?
I'm not, a sixty story skyscraper on a per square foot basis.
Now, when I, when, but okay, I heard. You know better than me. I'm, I'm about to say.
I, I'm not, I'm not talking about soft costs and stuff like that. I'm talking about like just hard costs. So I'm like, that's how I'm using to relate. But again, like to me, there's no, there's no foundation. There's no, you know, piles or deep foundation. There's no walls. There's no dry, well, maybe there's dry. But it's like, it, it, it's cosmetic. So I'm just, I don't know. I, I'm having a hard time.
You don't think it'd be completely gutted down to the quote unquote stud?
Doesn't matter. No, dry, drywall's five dollars a square foot.
I'm not, I'm not talking about running new gas lines. I'm talking about when that we have to run new guys.
Or seven hundred and fifty thousand? No, no way.
And, and.
I can't wrap my mind.
And, and Todd, and my point is not to challenge the number of the math, right? Again, you're better than me. The question I'm w- wondering about this conversation is. Whether or not this is the actual number, this is what we go with. Is that the conversation that we have now? Or is that a conversation at OACM? Is that a conversation at facilities? Like, can we have, when we get down to the granular details about?
That's fair. Yeah.
What, and, and, and I'm, I don't know, right? But the idea is again, just because it's on this list doesn't mean this is the money we're going to spend. It means we're asking for the possible authorization up to forty-three point five million. We may spend thirty-four.
Has that ever happened?
Absolutely.
That's what I said, two thousand nineteen, we do have funds left over that Travis from campus, campus construction. Brought to our attention at.
How much?
So we during pre-construction and construction, we go contingencies. Uh, there are owner requested changes, there are discovered conditions, there are, you know, variety of things, as you know, in construction that come up. And so we want to put you in the position to have money left over at the end of the day.
Well, that's why.
So, so that's, well, that's why we put contingencies. Todd, I'll, I'll say it differently. Not to two thousand nineteen, I want to say to two thousand fifteen. At one point in time, we were about seven million dollars. I think it was a ninety-eight million dollar, right, capital project. We were about ninety-one million and the board made a decision to then do some additional deferred maintenance projects. That we would have had to do the next capital project anyway. So the issue would be, even though it may have said it was six point one, that project came at four point two.
Yeah.
And then we decided, either we decided not to spend any more money, right? Which is a smart thing to do in this current economy. Or we decided that there are some other projects that we hadn't planned for that may be worth our while. Financially speaking, long term, if we did them at that point in time. So we, we have definitely come under the capital project budget that was allocated by the voters.
I, I have a question about that. I think which would be good for the board and the public. If we take out a forty million dollar bond, are we paying interest on that forty million dollar bond? Are we only paying interest as we draw down on it?
The latter.
So only as you draw down on it?
Correct.
Okay.
So we're going to have a presentation on the, the details of the finance just momentarily, I believe.
Okay.
Well, with rest of those, those good questions.
Okay.
And I, right, I keep wanting to go to the finance.
No, I'll, I'll reserve the rest of my questions. I feel like.
I would also encourage you, I don't know, we both were at the last OACM meeting where we saw this. So to bring out all of these questions, continue to bring out all of these questions.
I'd say it would be good for the whole board to hear some of the. I'm happy to just do it in the committee meeting.
No, 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 no.
For clarification and also for, there were some things at the OACM meeting that I suggested to Chris, let us bring it to the board too.
Yeah.
Yeah, just like we had some items discussed at last week's facilities and finance committee. And I said, bring it to the board too.
Yep.
So it's to just go out there because we ne- we also never know when the community is listening. So we would want to repeat it as many times as possible.
That makes sense.
Yep, keep asking. And just for folks to know, I know we use a lot of acronyms. Some folks may be aware. OACM, if I'm not mistaken, stands for owner, architect, construction and management, right? And so it's where various numbers of folks who work on our projects together come to have a week, a meet, meeting every other week, if I'm not mistaken. Once a month, to have conversations about our capital projects, to bring everybody together, see how things are going and go that route. So that's what OACM stands for. And any board members, welcome to attend. Chris sends out the agenda for all board members. Karen has been attending. Todd has been attending.
Yeah, I, I was, I was on the phone last time and I was driving and I lost reception a couple of times. So I kept like dropping in and out. So I, I didn't get to participate as much as I normally do in the last one, but.
Gotcha. Um. But these are also questions, just so that our community knows, these are not the only place in which we'll ask these questions. We'll definitely be asking these questions at OACN. We'll definitely be asking these questions at a facilities meeting. We'll definitely be asking them at finance. We start trying to talk about how we're going to finance these projects. What projects are financially viable long term? Um, and then we'll get to the, some of the finances in a minute. But I, my request, Todd, is to keep asking the questions.
Okay.
I'll add also when we, when we get to the point where we're bidding projects, um, along with your construction managers. We look at different procurement options that you have in order to get the best pricing. So when we're looking at roofing and you have ten million dollars worth of roofing, that's a very attractive package. Yeah. So we look for opportunities to bid them separate, bid them together, compare numbers. So there's scrutiny as well, um, to try to get the most competitive um, numbers that the market will provide you.
And just because I was doing some of this from memory, please do not quote me directly about the two thousand fifteen capital project. I will find folks exact numbers uh, when I have time to actually look at my computer. I want to be sure. But, but it was somewhere in that range. I want to make sure folks are aware of it.
And, and maybe we need to specify like with um, the science renovate cabinets. It's not drywall cabinets. These are um, that material is some heavy duty material and uh, I, I don't know if it's marble or what exactly. That's not my forte.
Yeah. So for science rooms, um, they're resistant to chemicals because you're using chemicals in middle school curriculum. Um, it's also casework, it's gas systems, right? So you have buns of burners and things. So there's safety shut offs. There's, you know, that's a whole system. Uh, this assumes renovation of the floor and of the ceiling so that when you go in, you have a new science room.
Yep. And then lastly, I just want, feel like to add again for the community's sake. Well, this is a full list, and I said that we've always done our capital projects in phases. Whatever projects we decide in phase, whatever phase it would be, would be gone through again in significant detail. Much more down to the granular, so it doesn't just say cabinets, right? It'd be much more specific about that in terms of what we're actually doing. So this is an ongoing conversation should our community decide to give appro- So this is an ongoing conversation should our community decide to give approval for this project. This is not the only. Nowhere near the only conversation that we'd be having.
And we will come back to the board with the specific packages, um, to seek your approval and to.
Every step of the way.
So there are various points of connection, um, where we'll have these conversations and, and seek your approval to move forward.
So let's talk about the finances. I'm sure that's what other people have something to say as well. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you and good evening. Uh, Todd, those are great questions. Awesome segue to the financial aspect of this, I can tell you that. Um, Chris mentioned that, uh, we have a team that kind of helps us with the referendum for the capital project. And part of that team is the, obviously the financial aspect. So I've invited, uh, Ben Maslona from Fiscal Advisors. Fiscal Advisors is the entity that assists us through this, uh, through this process, particularly for the financial end. So I'll turn it over to Ben.
All right. It's good to see everyone again. And I feel like we could just have a conversation back and forth, but I do have some slides prepared. So we'll go through that and. But we'll keep it casual. So please fire your questions away, uh, as you see fit. So looking at a future capital project, um. Obviously Chris did a good job of describing the infrastructure improvements. One of the guiding principles the district has, uh, stuck by over the years. Is to make sure that your total debt service is not more than seven percent of your budget. So keeping that within region, reason. Has been, um, a guiding principle. And I'll show you a little bit later on, the numbers behind that. And we're still. Able to meet that criteria and layer in an existing forty-three point nine million dollar project and keep that as well. You also want to stabilize what's called the local share. So you have two pieces of the equation, right? You have your debt service, which is your borrowed money and what you pay. Principal interest on, and you end up the, the building aid coming back to you, which is fifty-eight point one percent is your building ratio. So you get that revenue back. The difference between those two numbers is what the tax levy has to raise to support the capital project. We want to try to stabilize that figure. Again, this is something that the hundred and twenty million dollar referendum has progressively, as phases have come on. Has increased gradually, but it will stabilize and we'll be able to layer a new project and stabilize that number, uh, and not increase taxes to pay for the existing project. Uh, phased approach, this is something that we've done in the two thousand nineteen project that I'll just kind of touch on a little bit. Um, you mentioned that if you approve a project, you don't just go out and borrow the money, right? You would do it in phases. We have a detailed approach where we look at the construction cash flow. How much money are you going to need? What's reasonable to spend within one cycle or one twelve-month period? And if we were average out the two thousand nineteen project, we would be about fifteen million dollars per year. I would anticipate something very similar to that. So forty-three million, forty-three point nine million dollar project, estimated about fifteen million dollars per year. Three-year project, three-phase project. You borrow fifteen million in year one, thirty million in year two, forty-three point nine in year three. So you're not going to borrow it all at once. Also, you would never want to permanently finance a capital project initially as well. So one of the things that we want to avoid is a situation where you would permanently finance the entire authorization. Be paying debt service on forty-three point nine million dollars, but only spend forty. Now you're paying debt on three point nine million dollars you did not need to borrow. So we permanently finance projects at the end of their life. When the costs are known. And again, we do it in phases to avoid that situation. We also don't want to put you in an arbitrage situ- situation where the federal government doesn't like it if you borrow money and make money on it. They're kind of opposed to that. And school districts can borrow money at a tax exempt rate and invest it at a higher rate than you can borrow at in most instances. So we want to avoid that situation as well. Uh, maximizing a state building is another thing that we're going to help assist with, uh, something we've been doing and keeping a very close eye on. Now you're building it ratio. As I alluded to, is fifty-eight point one percent. So if you do unadable work, you're basically giving it fifty, fifty-eight cents on every dollar. We don't want to do that. Again, a key financial considerations, um, the building aid ratio which I men- uh, mentioned, maximum cost allowance. So this is something, um, that Chris's slide that detailed what the scope items were going to be budget-wise. Is important to me, but I want to see that broken down by individual building. So every building within your district has a cost allowance, two numbers. The first one is a construction number and the bottom one, the second one is incidental. I put two buildings up on the screen here just to kind of give you an idea. Um, of those numbers. So the high school is to your left. The state has a maximum dollar amount you can spend on a capital improvement project at the high school. Within a five-year period and you get your fifty-eight point one percent back up. The maximum you can spend for construction work at the high school for five years is forty-five point seven million dollars. And you get your fifty-eight cents back on every dollar. You could spend seventy of them, but the additional is not in. So we want to avoid that situation. Then you look at any project that's been done within the last five years. That reduces what's available as of today. So what I did here is I highlighted a top number in yellow. If we did a project today that was going to the state, twenty-six point two million dollars could be spent at the high school and you get full aid on that. And that's within the current footprint of the building. So there's two numbers because the state doesn't like to make anything easy. That's a construction number. The bottom number is what we call incidental. So the bottom number represents all of your soft costs. So all of your fees, design, uh, bonding, et cetera. Also, site work. So at the high school, your starting point is eleven point four million. We've taken on two projects in the last five years and subtract that number out. And as I sit here today, you could spend six point nine million on site work and soft costs at the high school. So I put on here the high school and you could see the elementary school, which is to the right. How drastically smaller those numbers are, which is something that our firm will make sure we adhere to. So one of my roles will be to take Chris's scope by building. And then look at it and say, do we fit within those numbers in every single instructional building of what you have met in? Uh, to make sure that we maximize that aid. And if we're going to exceed those allowances at any point in time, any one of those buildings. I will probably recommend that you phase that project out so that it fits within that. Uh, and then again, that just minimizes what the impact may be in the district. So a very important thing, um, that we always look at.
Is that maximal cost allowance based on square footage?
So it's actually based on building capacity and it's not based on current capacity. So the state has very dated information in regards to this information. They looked at, at, at some point in time, and it's usually thirty to forty years old. Uh, the high school was built to accommodate X amount of building. They're probably still using that number. If you don't poke them, they typically will leave those numbers alone. And if you poke them and you say, hey, we would like to build a ten-room addition to the building, will you give us aid on that? They're going to say. Oh, well, what are you using the building for now? Are you using it to its current capacity or not?
Yeah.
Uh, so usually those numbers, if you're reconstruction, they will stay as is. The only time they'll adjust them is if you ask them for more aid. Or if you're going to do large-scale addition.
Helpful. Thank you.
So you said it's outdated. How far back?
It's hard to say, to be quite honest. Um, I've run into districts where it's forty, fifty, sixty years old. And there's the biggest, I think discrepancy you see is in rural school districts where. They might have had at some point twelve hundred kids at the high school and the state's still calculating building aid based on twelve hundreds students. And they currently have like five or six hundred.
Yeah, that, that's what I was going to ask because we do have some schools with enrollment is lower. So in those si- situations, we benefit from that, right?
Absolutely. And I think to your point.
Sounds like you're not talking about it. No.
A lot of schools, um, with shrinking enrollments around New York State do benefit.
Yeah. And what, what's the, the, uh. The payback on a percentage basis for new construction like ground up? I think we've talked about before. I can't remember, but.
So.
Cause that ties into some of the things we're talking about.
Okay, I'll, I'll put it this way. I'll answer your question hopefully a little bit different, but hopefully I'll answer it. Let's say you wanted to build a brand new high school building. They will give you forty-five million for construction and eleven point four in the instance. And probably a new high school is going to cost.
Hundred. Okay.
At least. So I would say fifty percent pay that at best.
Okay.
Now that I'm busy, charts. Just, this is just, you all have seen this before and I apologize that it is so busy. But this is just that analysis of debt service to budget. Really, column five represents the co- current total debt service and what's going to be layered in as well. In regards to all of your old debt, which would essentially be the ninety-eight million dollar referendum you alluded to, along with a hundred and twenty million dollar referendum. Um, that's in column five is total debt service. Your budget is in column six and this is total gross expenditures on your budget. Seven percent of those gross expenditures is represented in column seven. And really the difference what I'm looking for is between columns five and seven to see if we've stayed within that seven percent. Um, you can see the first two years, we were slightly over, uh, our target. But I think as I've, we've talked about before, we purposely did that because we took advantage of low interest rates in order to accomplish that goal. Analysis of local share. So I mentioned earlier, there's two kinds of numbers at play. You have your debt service number and your building aid number. One of the things to kind of, uh, take a look at in this, in this sheet especially is column five, which is the actual and estimated building aid. So as you could see, it starts to grow, right? It's increasing year over year. And that's relative to the fact that projects related to the hundred and twenty million dollar project are now receiving building aid. And that continues to grow. Uh, the difference between your total debt service and your total building aid is what's represented in column seven. And that peaks out estimated at about eight point two million dollars in two thousand twenty-nine, thirty. That would be when the rest of the hundred and twenty million dollars is permanently financed. Uh, we've done three bond issues for that so far. I anticipate two more. Uh, as I sit here today, we have nineteen million dollars, which we've not borrowed for yet for that project. So it remains authorized and unissued. We would authorize and issue that. Well, it's already been authorized. We would issue it at the time if needed. I re- I showed him the green highlight where there's a drop. So when you peek out at your. Tax levy, what that is supporting capital projects, when that number drops, that signifies an opportunity to layer in new projects. Without increasing taxes, right? We don't want to go above that eight point two million dollar figure. Just a little more, I guess, detail on the, uh, potential forty-three point nine million dollar project. We did talk a little bit about. Phasing and the fact that I, I could foresee if, if the board does want to move forward, what I would do is probably do a more drilled down approach at. A three-phase, fifteen million dollar per phase and then come back with a less busy prior schedule. Just the forty-two point nine billion would be, uh, layered in there. Uh, we would be looking at projects which are reconstruction projects. So building aid would be paid over a fifteen-year period. Um, we would also stay within that seven percent, uh, parameter of the budget. Uh, you know, overall, I think that the district is looking at a project at this time with where we're at. Um, debt service and local share wise, you're in, in a good position to undertake new projects without increasing that. Um, tax effort for capital projects. Looking at the potential local share layering in a new project, now this is very similar to last time I was here. I did thirty, forty and fifty million dollars. So what I really like to do is since we're talking more into forty-three nine, hone in on that column four. Which if we do a capital project, uh, layering in a forty million dollar project, we should be able to. Keep your local share at eight point two million or below. Um, and that's for the foreseeable future. So once we peek out at twenty-nine, thirty, we would not have to raise additional levy. In order to undertake this project. And I know a lot of your neighbors who are more highly aided than the district. Go out with no tax increase projects all the time. You probably see it everywhere. If they're more highly aided, they get ninety, ninety-five percent building aid. But because of where we're going to max out and then we're going to have drops, you could actually do the same with an upcoming project. Uh, the other thing I, and I just came up in the conversation, I, I think it bodes mentioning the timing of the vote. I think is very, uh, prudent. Um, I would say ninety percent of school districts I work with vote in the fall. Uh, and the real rationale between, between voting in the fall versus voting in May is it typically takes. One year from the date of vote to, uh, when you can probably put your first shovel on the ground, or sorry, when you can go to bid. So if you were to vote in May of twenty-six, you would look at May of twenty-seven. If Chris will tell you, it's a terrible time to go to bid. All contractors have their work lined up. You're not going to get any work done. If you vote in December and you go one year out.
Yeah.
You'd be bidding in December of twenty-six, which is the most opportune time to get the lowest bids possible. And it sets you up perfectly for a summer construction in twenty-six. So that's just a little commentary on that.
I've noticed. Yeah, absolutely. It makes a huge difference. I mean, when people are busy, they'll throw numbers out there and they'll be like, well, we don't need the work. So here's what it's going to cost you. Um, so that makes a huge difference and people are usually willing to give discounts because they need to get their books lined up. Um, so, um, I, I think it's a great strategy.
This, in my numbers currently too, just, um, I know we've talked about these before. I typically estimated bond rates for fifteen years that are around the four seventy-five. Uh, currently we're in the three, eight to four-ten range. So significantly building a conservative cushion there. Uh, and, uh, one of the things that I, I'll also mention is that the district has rated a double A minus right now. So two notches below triple A. It's a very highly rated, um, level where you're at. And I did do an analysis, um. It's probably about six months ago or so, where I looked at. If, if you had financed a hundred and twenty million dollar project at one rating notch lower, you would have paid an extra two point three million in interest expense. Two notches lower was around three million. Three notches lower was four and a half million. So by keeping that higher, high rating, uh, by keeping your reserves at a high level. Uh, you're able to access the capital markets and borrow money at a lower interest rate, which obviously impacts your taxes.
Yep.
So before we ask, uh, questions and see forms of questions, I think. One thing that we have not said, and we've said it in other spaces, but it bears repeating here today. Um, a capital project would have no impact on the, uh, annual budget. Um, there are two separate lines of resources. One cannot be used to fund the other. Um, and so just want to make sure everyone is aware of that. We're not asking for an additional increase in the annual budget. This would be a special budget line to just do capital projects. And I always feel like that bears repeating for folks to know. Um, because just because you approve forty-three million, doesn't mean we have that money to go. Do some other things, right? Like it doesn't, it doesn't work that way.
The only caveat I would add to that is that part of our budget is the debt service.
That's correct.
So we do need to factor that in. So like the more we borrow, the higher our debt service. And to your point, you know, like with the. ITA negotiations talking about like, hey, let's just, you know, burn down our reserves. But because we have high reserves, we're able to borrow and save millions and millions of dollars by getting a lower interest rate. So like. I just wanted to kind of add all that in there, but it is, it is part of the budget.
It's a complicated equation. Thanks for that. Yeah, no, appreciate that. That's a, it's a great point. Um, other, we have questions about the finances or what this could look like or just general questions as well. It's the opportunity to ask them.
I just want to say thanks for the explanations. Thank you for the questions. I'm taking in a lot and it's great.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to get into the weeds and some of the stuff. I actually don't know if this is the right time. I think that we can address some of these things. Then we come back to the full board and kind of go from there. So.
So you said you don't know if it is the right time.
Yeah, well, I mean, like, cause I, I want to question like the parking lot costs and things like that and like square footage. And there's, there's this thing. Cause I think before we were like five hundred thousand, then it jumped to a million. So I'm trying to understand like what, what additional are we adding on? And I want to understand the playgrounds better, but like, I don't think we need to get into the weeds that here. And yeah, so.
So then, so later on, if we're like, oh, the science questions would only cost three million, like we, that happens. We, we, we talk about that.
And let me remind the board, um, we have a couple hundred million dollars worth of deferred maintenance. So if we save two million dollars in classroom renovations, then that two million from my perspective could go to a pavement or parking lot or a roof someplace else.
Yeah.
So this, what we're talking, the line of credit is an interesting term to use, but. What I'm seeing right now is we need that line of credit in order to generate revenue, to mainstay, to maintain some stability in our tax cap. And to keep taking care of our assets, um, not doing a project, not getting approval to spend money. This allows us from getting money and from keeping, yeah, keeping up with some deferred maintenance costs that is pretty significant.
Yeah. And, and for clarity, I'm not saying like, let's not spend the money. I'm saying like, let's spend the money wisely. And like, let's make sure that. You know, it, it's going to the places that need it the most. And that, that's kind of like where I, I try to get into the details of it just to, to make sure that. Maybe there's a way that we can do things more efficiently. Or maybe like, just because it's deferred, doesn't mean it needs to happen now. Like maybe we can get another ten years of life out of something. And then we can take that money and reallocate it towards buying a, a gener- or, you know, generator or buy, you know, putting on a new roof like something that is needed. So. Um, yeah, I just want to make sure we're, we're doing things efficiently. So.
But which I have to credit our administration team because I, I feel that they have done their due diligence. We have our facilities evaluation that we're reviewing and they've connected with principals at schools when we saw a point in middle school floor. It's because earlier this year, we had a meeting with the principals to. It's because earlier this year, we had a meeting with the principals to just go over what are your top concerns and that was one. It was brought to our attention about the um bleachers and not able to utilize the gym to capacity. Um, because we can't seat people on the bleachers, so um, I don't think it's our. Our board work that we need to narrow into the details. Because we've heard from the players on the floor of what they're doing and what needs to be done in their respective buildings and speaking with. Um, other staff that the principals are um connecting with. And we've been talking about this capital project for over six months. Because Benjamin, you were here last year fall around November time doing this um presentation. So and we know that we had agreed and had discussion about putting it off to this fall. And now hearing is interesting that you said ninety percent of school districts usually do it in the fall. Which um, I guess I I've never been in this area during this cycle to see see that, but I'm glad to hear that. And knowing that, as Chris had pointed out um at his earlier presentation, that. We need to vote and decide by September twenty-third because that gives us forty-five days. Or whatever time period in advance of the December ninth vote to be able to communicate. To the community.
Which would also include a public hearing.
Public hearing. Today is August twenty-sixth. Our next board meeting is September ninth.
Oh, I mean, we're not being asked to vote for this now.
We are not being asked to vote for this today. This is the discussion. Make sure folks can consume all the information. I would ask both our community and fellow board members to take a look at our capital project website. Which gives both updates of the current projects and photos sort of beforehand after gives a really good idea of what's taking place. Um, I greatly and will continue to appreciate Todd's perspective. Um, and I'm also looking forward to our most our. Next building condition survey, um, because I hear you, not all things need to take place, but the last one I saw was a little scary at times. So I'd love to go through with your expertise and try to think about what this could look like. And I know I know they make it look scary. I can get that. It was it was a couple hundred million dollars of the current maintenance. Doctor Blake, you've been you've been working on.
No, I mean, I just say, you know, I want to I want to credit our our, you know, CFO and finance team. We had a lot of questions about. Reserve funds and fund balance and, you know, Ben reaffirmed this and you just reaffirmed it. Dr. Brown reaffirmed it, you know, meetings last year of the importance of doing that. And uh, you know, our our cost to capital and our credit rating is really important and we're enjoying the benefit now, so. You know, I think I think our our CFO for doing that and on finance meeting, we'll continue to monitor those accounts and make sure that we retain that good status.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Yes, Chris.
Could I ask a refined request, which is if the board feels comfortable with. Allowing the team to move forward to prepare their resolutions or your rule on the twenty-third of September. We have to move forward because we're just seeking, you know, this review and, you know, pull up and say.
And they happen in parallel. I mean, as we continue to ask questions, they're like.
Absolutely. I think even preparing those documents doesn't necessarily lock us into the projects, right? It's the resolutions that we're referring to.
Yeah.
Uh, I think sort of as a straw poll, um, that we sort of are anticipating going down that path, but are there any objections to us? Having those documents ready on the twenty-third and continued dialogue and conversation, there'll be another facility or finance facilities meeting. Before then, there'll be another OACM meeting before then as well. Um, if that works.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, I'd like to.
Does that work? So give you what you need, Chris?
Thank you. We'll proceed.
Fantastic. Don and Ben, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, are we gonna push through, board members? We have two more agenda items.
Do we have a choice?
The 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 choice would be to take a a five-minute break.
No, no.
Oh, okay, there we go. So then we will then move. We will then move to agenda item eleven point two. Um, this is cell phones for administrators. Uh, just so the community knows, this is a agenda item that was tabled from our reorganization meeting. Um, in fact, it probably should have been on our previous agenda. Uh, it was, we missed it, I missed it. Um, and it's back uh here for uh approval today. There has been some dialogue amongst the board members. About cell phones for administrators, including conversations with legal counsel, including conversations around the finances of it. And so just so our community knows that this wasn't, it wasn't just that we tabled it, it's we engaged in dialogue, conversation. And now here we find ourselves. So with that being said, we'll entertain motions.
Uh, motion to approve recognition of select district employees who are required to create district own cell phone in order to develop.
Second.
Moved by Jacob, second by Adam. Discussion, debate, questions, conversation.
Just following up on what Sean said, I feel like after getting an explanation from like legal counsel of. What district providing cell phones allow, like, allow administrators to do and the lack of. Alternatives, the lack of peaceful alternatives. Uh, I was one of the, you know, I was one of the sort of like, this doesn't make sense to me, and now it makes sense to me.
Are are you open to elaborating on that or?
So, yeah, I mean, so I think based on the fact that it was originally framed for me as like it's an eighty thousand dollar cost. But it's actually a twenty thousand dollar cost after reimbursement and that without providing cell phones. We put ourselves in a position where like we can't, where we cannot actually direct administrators. Or like folks who do have cell phones to respond to things after work hours. Um, and the legal counsel also advised against um. Or against stipends. I mean, I I I would need someone to.
The use of personal phones, the stipend would be to provide for our personal cellphone. And our legal counsel are recommends that we not use, we not conflate administrators' personal lives and professional lives in that way. That it may open up additional liability.
So I I I just have a a question and I'm not against it. I just, this actually came up today. Um, like we we use apps, like we have an app on our phone, so everyone has like a second line. And like when you call from your phone, it calls through the app, so it's a totally different number. So their number is hidden. It's the it's there's different work phone numbers. Um, and it's super inexpensive and they're separate. Like you can put in settings there like, you know, you can't receive calls after a certain time or, you know. It has that been looked at as an option and I'm yeah, I'm just curious.
Yes, and and um, the liability that exists, uh, if there's a FOIA request for an administrator's um device.
Yeah.
That device will go with that app and all the data.
And that that was a good my question because like we you can with the apps, like we could text people, you know, you can phone call and it's like you can. You can export all that data. So I wasn't sure when it comes to FOIA requests, if it would be like, hey, this this app's been the only thing that's ever been used for communication. Here's the app data, but leave the person's personal cellphone out of it. But if if you don't, if they they force you to, you know, given your personal cellphone, then that makes sense to me because I wouldn't feel comfortable. Having administrators have to have their stuff looked through. So that's that's kind of what I was trying to understand is when it comes to FOIA requests. Is there a line between apps and phones or it's like everything?
That's for your request and then there's just access. Um, that school district device is going to be on in the middle of the night at three AM. When we may have a threat assessment or something else may be happening or a car runs into a school building. And when we call, we want someone to pick up. And your personal phone, you could say I'm not doing that. And the school one, we kind of expect you to.
Yeah, and and again, and I'm not trying to like belabor this, but you know, you 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 can. You know, on our phone, like my first phone, I can like shut it off and then the only notifications I would get are from the app. So if it rings, it rings. Right? And I can also shut off the app notifications, like I you you can kind of control who's calling, who's not, when you receive messages. So I'm just throwing that out there, like maybe now is not the time to do it because it is such small cost, but like I don't know if in the future, if that makes more sense because it. Maybe is actually more efficient. Um, so I I'm open to all of that. And I I said it early on, I'm.
I haven't been in the cellphone business for twenty years as a former CIO. I want to get out of it.
Yeah.
And I don't know how at this moment with all the liability. And we're talking about administrators. We're talking about folks who are on as one person who's on twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
And right now for the twenty thousand dollars for the kind of health and safety and the mental. And just the support I need, right? Like this is well worth the cost and and I'm open to some new approaches over time, but we don't have a better option.
Yeah, and just for clarity, like for me, I think like the, you know, the executive staff, like you have to have your phones. But then I wonder of like the amount of other phones that are out there for principals or other people, like do we really need to have that many out there? Or could they survive or they're not based on the amount of usage that it would get? So that's kind of what I was thinking. Again, I don't know if now is the time to hash that out. But maybe there's a way to get out of the cellphone business with the exception of, you know, a dozen people who I think need to have their own phone because of the amount of time you're on.
Agreed. And we've purged that list quite a bit over the years.
Yeah.
Just can say is that something that would be revisited when contracts come like.
Yes, we've been looking at it for a while and Zach Lynn has been leading that charge and we're talking about a fraction of what we used to provide. And where we are right now are in many cases are contracts really obligated.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I I want to reiterate in my time on the board that that list has been purged significantly. It used to be a couple hundred, if I'm not mistaken, at one point in time. It was almost like we were giving phones away. Uh, and then uh, a number of board members have been raising this question over the past fifteen, sixteen years.
Yeah.
So tech communication is always, it's also changed as well. So something for us to continue to consider, to explore and try to find um efficiencies without.
Yeah, the list was a hundred and forty last year and this list I think is around seventy.
So there you go. And that's down from what it was in like two thousand fifteen.
Yeah.
So when it comes to revisiting in the future, like contract negotiations, is that something that?
Yes.
I guess, how does that work? Like, do we say, hey, like, we'd like you to re, I don't know when the next negotiations are with the impacted union, but it's.
Three years?
Yeah, and that would be um something that we would talk about in a in a privileged session first with our attorneys. And then maybe talk about within as part of a collective bargaining uh session.
I would just say, please know it's it's a topic of.
Yeah.
Conversation has been and will continue to be.
Yep. So I got.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Additional questions, comments, debate? Hearing none, let's call the question. All in favor? All opposed? Got it. Any abstentions? Fantastic. The motion passes. Uh. It seems ironic to begin with giving administrators cell phones and then turning to taking cell phones away from students. Uh, but that's where we find ourselves.
Sorry, they get it from pop stuff.
Yes, they do differently, Pouch. Um, and I actually want to contextualize that pouch, uh, as as I heard you say that. Uh, this is policy five, six, nine, five, personal electronic devices for a second reading and adoption. Uh, we will have some conversation. I do want to address something that um I heard uh Todd say at the last meeting and I thought I was also picked up locally. Um, which I thought was a really good comment that you made, that it seems like an adult pro solution to a kid problem. And that really got me thinking a little bit about it and it got me thinking about why we selected um the pouches that we that we have. Um, and the part that I want to just sort of open with and communicate as we continue to have some dialogue and some conversation. Um, and Matt and I were just talking about this on the way into the meeting about, again, just sort of addictive nature of cell phones. Which was part of the reason that the governor is passing this law, sort of acknowledging the extreme difficulty that takes place with young people and getting them off their devices. And so one of the things that we were thinking about is ways in which to disrupt that in some ways. Um, the irony is uh some of the, most of the locking pouches don't stop the announcements. Don't stop the dings or the chimes. And so you can get a yonder patch, but I still know that I got a text message. Um, the pouches that we selected with the RFID blocking was an attempt to assist some students. Should they choose to use them and we're gonna figure it, we're gonna find out. But the idea was to try to disrupt the constant Pavlovian response to. I hear a ding. I know I just got a a IM and Instagram. And so we can look at it in a host of different ways. There's no question about it. But the question becomes, are we trying, what are we trying to disrupt? And I think the conversations that we were having. Uh, as both the policy committee and with the great help of Mary Grover and Carrie Burke. We're trying to find some different ways to disrupt some of the cultural norms that are behind cell phones. Not just always taking them away and being liable for them, especially given it's gonna be a difficult transition. So. One, thank you, Todd, for making me think, right? And then for not explaining those pouches as funny as they may be. And trust me, uh, I just saw, I don't want to say what district it was, but there are a number of districts who are using the exact same pouches as well. That didn't go with locking pouches or didn't go with lockers. And we may find again that this is not the perfect solution. But this is where we find ourselves with a statewide, for the most part, unfunded mandate. And we're gonna go down that path. And I'm sure you have a response, so please feel free.
No, I I I appreciate that and it makes me feel good that I made you think a little bit. That might be the first time that happened.
No, it's, it's not, it is not.
Um, no, I and and I think for me it was less about like which pouch. It was more like, I just don't think the kids are gonna use the pouch. And I think they're gonna put the phone in their pocket or they're gonna put it in their backpack. Um, and my whole my whole comment was like, we're spending our money, money on something that I think. Less than three percent of kids are gonna use generally. Um, and I mean, Newfield is just telling their kids they have to put it in the lockers. And they're not spending any money. And it's almost like, hey, we there we have a solution to meet our legal obligations and the state said, just put it in the lockers.
Yep. And you have other school districts are spending hundreds of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars to build lockers.
And 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 what I think, my my personal opinion is, we sit and wait. We see what the response is. Let this school district spend a hundred thousand dollars on lockers. Let's see what the feedback is at the end of the year. Let's see how Newville does. You know, let's see how the schools do with the Faraday. Let's see how schools do with the whatever, the one that we're getting. And don't spend any money and just just wait and see and then find a better solution because I just don't think it's, I don't think it's a solution. And so so but and again, like that's that's all I wanted to, I don't think anyone's gonna use it.
We can't sit and wait. We have to get a policy in place to um. Ban the phones, um, what is it, belt to belt?
Yeah.
So therefore it has to go somewhere, especially if we don't have lockers for all students to access. What do we do with that?
Do we not have lockers for all students, all schools?
All schools don't have lockers.
Which, so Boynton and Middle, like Boynton and DeWitt, are there not enough lockers for students?
That and elementary buildings won't have lockers.
So high school does?
High school has, I I gotta check to see if we have one for every student. I'm pretty sure we do.
I think the high.
But I don't, you know, every student using their locker is another conversation.
Or where is the locker located relative to what part of the building and entrance?
Yeah.
But 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 those are all great questions and we're gonna, we're gonna find that out.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, so I hear you. The money has been expended at this point in time.
The state has given us money to expend to be in compliance with the law and it was a minimal amount of money. Um, and for my colleagues, if districts are choosing to go the locker route, they're, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars in infrastructure needs. Even when they thought they were prepared. For us, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we spent twenty thousand dollars on these pouches. So that we will be prepared to do something at the beginning of school, which is gonna be in a few days. Um, so that's where we are right now and I too agree. That we're gonna have shifts and changes with how we implement this po- policy. And if I want to, I want to be clear too, we're still, we're we're talking about the implementation now. Will the policy outline what we're actually purchasing or not? Correct, it's not going to. So at some point, it's up to my team and I, and which has been informed to use the pouches at this point. To make adjustments on what we use, but the po- policy is gonna say they're gonna be put someplace.
Yeah.
That's in compliance with the law.
Yes, our our process, our main goal for this evening is to adopt a policy. I imagine there'd be ongoing conversations about implementation. A good nu- good portion of that is outside of the board's purview. And yet simultaneously, I'm sure many of us have thoughts and feedback that we're gonna be sharing with Dr. Brown and his team.
Please.
So I think that's sort of where we find ourselves. So the real question for this evening is the policy itself. With a conversation about the implementation ongoing with the recognition that we are very close to the beginning of the school year. And I also want to make mention with families repeatedly being informed that this policy was going into effect. Um, even while they may be waiting for the exact details of what that looks like, not at the elementary school level because that hasn't changed from last year to this year for the most part. Um, but at the secondary level, there may be some specifics that folks that folks have. Um, I want to make sure that folks have the correct policy and it. I'm not sure that it's on here and for that I apologize. Um. Uh, there were two changes from our first reading. Um, and I believe someone asked a question about, oh, they are on here. Uh, the two changes from our first readings will both be found on page, is it page three?
Three, yes.
Thank you, on page three. Uh, one, there was a question about exemptions. Uh, item E educators may authorize limited structured use of devices for instructional activities at their discretion. Subject to prior administrative approval. That is not part of the legal mandate. Um, and yet it may be something that the district still wants to continue or the board may want to support as well. Um, that may actually even be a conversation from our educators. I know when I had a conversation with some educators, they were. Quite upset about the policy, talking about the ways in which they use devices and yet we have this mandate. And so. Um, it is allowable, it is permissible, but it's not required. Um, the other two changes are, the other, there's only two changes, they are highlighted. Um, one is talking about the exemptions at the request of our uh. ITA Union President Catherine Sinarra had asked us to put a comment in about staff being notified. The language you see here is my language and conversation with legal as well, uh, saying that not all exemptions should be. Due to privacy rules should not be reported in all cases. So just because a student receives an exemption. Doesn't mean that all staff faculty need to be aware of that exemption for a variety of reasons. How we communicate that, how we work through that, that's gonna. How we communicate that, how we work through that, that's going to be part of the implementation. And that's why the policy states when and where appropriate. Uh, Jacob, I know you asked a question, that's my language in talking with folks about what would be an appropriate way to phrase that.
I understand the intention.
So that's the idea behind it. And trying to also adhere to Catherine's suggestion about making sure staff would be notified. Uh, in terms of who has an exemption. And then lastly, um, in terms of the change from the first reading to the second reading. Um, there's a line that says interventions may include taking devices away from students. Storing devices in the main office and or contacting caregivers prior to return. Um, that is much more about implementation, but felt that some comment in the policy needed to be stated. One, that students cannot be suspended simply for violating the cell phone policy. And simultaneously letting caregivers know that it is possible. That staff or administrators would take a phone away, would possibly store it in the main office. And would, and or may require a caregiver conference or contacting the caregiver prior to its return. That's part of the implementation, but we thought that language should at least be in the policy to give folks some idea of where we find ourselves. So that's the changes to the policy based on the feedback that we got last time. Let's entertain conversations before we try to move the policy and go from there.
I am. So I was curious about other districts and how they are thinking about. Um, what's the language? Um, interventions and responses or some districts call it enforces, enforcement consequences and reporting, whatever the language may be. Um, I do worry that our language is. When I think about. It's interesting, right? If we were to have a consequence that was like, if this, then student gets suspended. I view that as inequitable because there's no room for interpretation understanding. But in this case, I think the if a phone appears, the phone goes to the office and there's communication. I think that that's an appropriate thing that then prevents, it prevents inequities in how it is followed through on, right? I, like I was a teacher, you know, like you, like some students get at you a little bit more than other students, right? I don't, as a teacher, I don't want to be thinking in my head, is this an instance where? I'm going to report this to the office or is this one where I'm going to smile and, you know, give a wink because I have that relationship with the student? I think the intention of the cell phone ban, which I really agree with, because I think they are addictive devices. If we're talking about addiction, if there was any, if a student had any other addictive thing, like, like, like a, like a drug, I don't know. Then right, we wouldn't say put it away. We would say we're taking that and we're following through on it. And I think that that will remove, so that in my mind, that would be my proposal for this policy. I'm uncomfortable with the language as is because I think it's insufficient. Um, to actually lead to stu, like, I think it leads to unpredictability and stability, instability for students and teachers and caregivers. I think caregivers deserve to know, like, we encourage you not to send your kids to school with their phone. But if it does come out, um, please know you will be informed because we're in partnership with you. It will be removed because we are serious about having this uh, learning environment. And then it will be returned and then the. It can escalate beyond that if it happens repeatedly, but I don't think there's a compelling reason to not. The first time, no, like if a phone comes out, the, the phone shouldn't be there anymore.
Thoughts, reactions, comments?
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense to me. I, I think it's important to, to be as clear as possible. So that way it is equitable across the board and everybody understands and you, you don't leave room for like ambiguity and people be like, well, how come? He only got a warrant in my phone that taken away. So I just. I, I, I second that, you know, that the more clarity we have, the better. And I think the more simple, the better. I don't think having like five opportunities, I think it should be like. Something, something basic. But you, you're, you guys are working on currently writing that up, right? Have we seen that, the final version of that?
I think we put something in your folder to look at.
I imagine, I pause, I haven't read it.
No, it's fine. Um, I, I, I would recommend some changes to the implementation guide respectfully because it does put a lot on teachers. I think that should be shifted to administrators, but I just want to go back to something that. Um, Jacob said and try to frame it in a way and I'm still gathering my thoughts. So thank you. I understand. I understand the desire. So I have two sort of things that I'm thinking about. One, does that language belong in a policy which then locks us into that very response? Until we change the policy or then we're out of compliance with the policy, which then opens up us to liability. Or is that?
Find liability in this.
So if we write it in policy and we pass it and then we don't follow it or we change it, but we still have the policy on the books. Then why couldn't a parent or caregiver say you didn't follow your policy even though our practice has changed? So I'm wondering if the policy, now I'm wondering, my practice has been to write policies. That are a little more vague intentionally to ensure that there could be specificity in the. Practice or the procedure, not necessarily in the policy. So that's one thing that, that I think about on a regular basis. And then this is just because I have the opportunity and I apologize, it's not to you at all. Um, this notion about inequality and inequity is always interesting to me as if words on the page will mandate equality. As someone who lives in a country that says liberty and justice for all, yeah, I've never experienced that.
Yeah.
Just putting it in a policy doesn't mandate that it would be equitable. I understand the desire and the need to have some clearly spelled out things. And I think I would be of the mindset to leave that to the administrators of each building to clearly communicate. Some of those things that you're talking about. I do think there needs to be a tiered system, right? I think that part is clear. I think we may not, personally, we may not completely agree on what that tiered system looks like, right? Or we may as well, right?
We'll never know.
But, well, we, we can, we will know because we're going to find out and it's, and it's going to be a topic of conversation. But the difference for me is this notion of, I'm, I'm in agreement with what you're saying about a tiered response. For me, that's part of the implementation. The policy should indicate what is possible and what can happen. So we know and let parents know what is there. And the way in which we chose to write it. And I know that Emily is not here today and also supports some stronger language. Um, I have been a little concerned about some of the policies that I've read. And in fact, let me back up. Sometimes it's difficult to find the actual policy that the board wrote compared to what is on a website about what the implementation is. And so we're not always reading the same thing. And I would respectfully say, I think if I'm not mistaken, of Usense, Poughkeepsie, and I'm not sure that was their policy. That was their communication to parents about what their tiered system would look like. Now, I, I may get, have that wrong.
It's the, it's the board policy.
I'll have to go back and take a look because I thought it was on their communication to parents website. But we'll, we'll go from there.
I don't believe so. It, it's, it's written like our policy. I mean, like for, for a number of the ones that I saw, Poughkeepsie being one example. I generally share, I understand it's like a, it's a, there's a fine line of balance or something between policy and implementation. I guess in this case. I mean, like as, as in a couple of weeks ago, like what I saw for the responses for the implementation had me concerned that we're not actually going to fulfill the, the intention and purpose of the ban. And I cannot, and I always regret saying this because then I cannot imagine, but like I, I can't, I, I think it is important for us to put into the policy. That if a phone is out, that phone will be removed. Um, because I think it's reasonable and within the spirit of the ban and therefore in the spirit of the.
Uh, it's not, it is not required by the ban. The, it's not required that if a phone is out, then it's removed. What the ban requires is that it's a distraction free environment and how you achieve that are a variety of ways. So the law, the, the mandate does not require us to take phones. That is one of the opportunities. And one of the responses that are available to school boards. What it is saying is that their phone should not be out. So it is possible to say to a student, put, put your phone away. Now, does that place an undue burden on teachers, right? In terms of equity, th, those are real questions. But I just want to be very clear, the, the, the mandate does not require us to take phones away. It does require us to have phones, to not have phones visible. And what, and what that looks like.
Dr. Brown, are, i, is it going to be like a school by school basis or is it going to be like high schools, like one type of thing? Middle schools are going to be kind of the same type of implementation and then elementaries are different? Or is it each school going to be allowed to implement it their own way?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, if you look into a default, we, again, we've been having a lot of conversations about this and it is different by level. And it will be done the way the policy is written. It does allow for folks to make professional judgments on a case by case basis. I do also, I hear all of the, again, I, as a person who has not been in favor of what's going to now happen to administrators. And the ambiguity and the amount of time we spent on hypotheticals, I know this is going to be a tough implementation. And I also know as a person who's written policies to put very specific language about what would happen in the first instances or second. It's unlike what we've done in any other policies, particularly our code of conduct, which I also now hold up as what we use to build relationships. And to support a safe and early environment in our schools. And what I've warned folks in Albany about is that this particular issue will get us to do things that we have not built over decades in this state. When it comes to building relationships and managing student behaviors. So I struggle with being more prescriptive than we have been because I think that's going to create user liabilities. Um, if not taking that phone, then what happens? Um, and there will be instances, whether we want to admit it or not, where I'm not taking that phone today. I'm gonna have this conversation differently at another time. I see it out, but I'm gonna choose to do something different to reserve the relationship, to reserve this instructional, the distraction is going to be if I'm going to get into a power struggle about this phone. And then when I say Professor Bradwell just passed a policy that requires me to take it, y'all know what kind of issues that's going to create for us?
That's fair.
Whereas when we have some leeway to engage in what we're describing as a distraction free environment. That will support teaching and learning and relationships, which this policy was intended to do was to build relationships. Then that's, so there's.
I think that's helpful. And I would dare say we're inviting you to come back at the end of September to have a conversation. And there may be a time where like, no, actually some, the change is necessary and we'll bring that up. Uh, one, one last thing, Todd, is I understand the mandate, it does provide for differences between elementary and secondary. Elementary students are requested to not bring their phone to school. Though they can bring their phones as long as they are silenced and in their backpack or in their cubby. That is vastly different than what the mandate says at the secondary level, right? So. Even the state is not really, you know, there's a little bit of difference and discrepancy there as well.
And, and ju, just for clarity sake, you said case by case based, so basically like each teacher is kind of going to have some discretion. On like how to handle different situations, but which is, I, I support.
Like with everything else we have.
Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, I just, I just wanted to be clear, so, okay, thank you.
Hopefully in keeping with the mandate.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
I think, yeah, I think a couple of things. Um, I guess first of all, I think having discretion. Um, you know, ca, can be, can be a good thing. Um, I, I wouldn't want there to be a policy where there's absolutely no discretion. I think the second thing is, you know, what, what's the intention, you know, behind the cell phone ban in, anyway? And, and like, what, what are we really looking for? Meaning like if cell phone use decreases by eighty-five percent this year because of the cell phone ban? I mean, that, that would be very good, you know, like, so, so I'm also thinking a little bit about that, like even if, if it's not a completely airtight policy and, you know, there's some. Cell phone use in the classroom, but it's, it's extraordinarily reduced. Um, you know, maybe to a point where it's really not a problem or causing any negative impacts at all, then that might be sufficient.
Yeah.
Um, that would be my second thing. And then the third thing would just be, I, I really like the idea of revisiting the policy in the sense of, I think we, we do want to put something in place. People have worked hard on the policy. It's, it's a pretty good policy. Um, you know, maybe just promising that we're going to come back and look at it in a month or two and then saying like, how, how is it, how is the implementation going?
Yeah.
Is it problematic? Like, is it, is it too loose of a policy so that it isn't working? Okay, we have to tighten up the policy, it's obviously not working. Versus actually, it's, it's a, a less restrictive policy, but it is working. So I guess those are, those are just some of my thoughts.
Yep, that makes sense.
A wondering I have regarding that is. As I try, as I get, get an understanding of what we do as the board and like our, like our role. How like, let's say we came back to the policy in a month or two, thinking about like. How would we, outside of anecdotal evidence, how are we, how would we be tracking? The effectiveness of this policy. And, and part of that is it just a question around, like, it gets back to this idea of discretion, right? A teach, like I can say, we don't have a cell phone problem. And I might go to a school and everyone's on their phone at lunch, right? And the intention of this is bell to bell, right? Because we know that lunchtime is a time where. It would be wonderful if kids were talking to each other. I have a feeling that there's a lot more active engagement with screens. And so part of like, again, my thought behind removing some of the discretion when it comes to. Removal of the phone might be less about removal of the phone because I definitely hear and I understand. And I also want to, I don't want to prescribe power struggles. I think that's bad for everyone. I also though, don't want an instance where we have maybe hundreds of. Instances of cell phones being used and we actually don't know because it's not being tracked, monitored. And so I want to better understand how we do that.
That's going to be the challenge for us all. And I, I, the best I can offer right now, we will bring back to you stories and anecdotal evidence. Because we have a law that's been informed by, from my perspective, no causal research or any metric that can indicate. The removal or the inclusion of a cell phone, is it contributing to a student achievement or not? And if anybody has that research that can, that's peer reviewed, I would like to see it. So.
I like, yeah, there's tons of it, right? Like, like it's something I've been reading about for the last two years.
Again, I, I've been reading a lot of it too. And that's the, un, understanding and talking about the different types of research. That's causal with regards to this particular device in schools. I just want to have that discussion about. And so to ask, I, I don't want to put forth a metric. That's not informed by research and that I could say is connected to student achievement. At this point, other than stories and anecdotal evidence. We can bring that back. Um, and our folks would have those stories. I would have my stories about if I see decreased usage or if things are going better. But um, if you're asking about a specific metric, I don't know if we would have that in September.
But, but I think like what Jacob is saying, I mean, I'm thinking about different things like we have, let's talk for example, so we can get some anecdotal evidence, we can ask people to do that. We, we could survey teachers, we could survey parents, we could sort of say like, how, how is it going, you know, like, um, with a very simple two, two or three question questionnaire. I guess, I guess not the question of whether it's good or bad or hurt, harmful or whatever, but just kind of like, how will we know? That the policy is effective enough that it's not causing problems?
Yeah, like with every other policy.
I, I think what we're all looking for is try to find the spirit of the ban, whether we agree with it or not, which is the removal of. Cell phones, particularly in instructional spaces. And I'm also in agreement that lunch is probably one of the bigger things we're going to do or. Stuck, or between the hallways or in restrooms or, you know, the, the, the whole thing, we're going to find all this out. And so I'm of the mindset. For the most part, and not because I helped write the policy or the other folks helped write the policy, but to pass the policy as it is. Uh, we made a mistake with Chris Globitz and I'll apologize. We do not have a board meeting on September twenty-third. Our board meeting is on September thirtieth. Uh, we told Chris to prepare documents for us by September twenty-third. Uh, but our next, our board meeting is, the second board meeting in September isn't until September thirtieth. And so just so board members know, it is already on the September thirtieth agenda to get an update on cell phone ban. So we've already started that agenda planning. And so we don't have to worry about if it's going to be on the agenda. It's, it's already there and we're expecting that conversation. And at that point in time, then maybe, you know, if we find ways in which we make some tweaks, we ask for some different implementation, we talk to our. Colleagues and friends and teachers and, you know, principals and cafeteria folks and see how things are, are going is sort of my thing. I think this is such uncharted territory. I do happen to agree with Jacob that there is some research, I disagree with Dr. Brown. There is some research and maybe not causal, but that they are, they are a distraction in educational spaces. And there's a reason why I banned them in my classroom as well.
That's why I was clear, let me underscore causal.
Yep, I hear you.
Few things are causal, but yeah.
I'm looking forward to that conversation as well.
This is the law.
I, I just want to say that this is a policy. A policy is just going to be a guidance overview, not detail of how to implement it. We have the implementation chart and so forth. And in this policy, we have reporting requirements at the end. Number six, which states that we're going to look at this annually and because according to New York State law, twenty-eight. Oh, three point, whatever, that we have to publish an annual report. So there will be some sort of reporting. And who knows if the state may turn around and say, you must abolish this whole thing. Yeah.
And that's what I'm worried about.
We have the, um, district though, I think it was in one of your communication where an email of the distraction free. And schools who already have implement, implemented their policies. As well as we, last year we had the high school and the two middle schools, Boynton and DeWitt, had some sort of cell phone guidance and. Usage. So, and we have a frequently asked question page that families can always go to. My, my thing is, we the adults give the children the phone.
So with that being said, how about we move the pile, oh, let me rephrase that. Entertain motions for a second reading and adoption and then see if there's additional dialogue and discussion and debate. Entertain motions for a second reading and adoption, and then see if there's additional dialogue and discussion and debate.
Oh, we didn't, we haven't done that yet?
We have not done that.
I, I moved to approve policy fifty-six ninety-five, personal and electronic devices for second reading and adoption.
Second. I just, I know, I knew you wanted that one.
Whatever, Todd.
Additional conversation and debate about the policy. There will be plenty of time for us to engage in conversation with our building leaders and our administrators about implementation.
I do have a question.
Please.
Um, I know that we have a student rep from the board. How, how do, how does that work? Like, like, do you want us, like?
Do you want to look at that policy?
Well, no, I'm just, I, I, I had this moment of disconnect. I'm like, we're talking about a policy that's directly affecting kids.
Two things. One, our student reps, which is part of a new New York State mandate, where you're required to have at least one ex official member of the student body to join us. We will have six or seven fill that role, four from Ithaca High School, is that correct? Who will be joining us at the table in future meetings.
Okay, got it.
Second, it is rare, almost against Robert's rules to go to the floor to ask folks to speak, even though we don't always abide by Robert's rules. And so we will make a quick exception and say, do you have anything that you'd like to share with us? As in, no, right, right. And please do not feel compelled to, to speak either.
No pressure. You're representing the entire student body.
That is fantastic. And we will be asking when everyone joins us, right? We will be asking for feedback, how things are going. Hopefully you, I'm sure you'll be providing it for us as well as our student reps do. So we look forward to that. So thank you for that. But I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
That folks also aware that we try to follow that. We don't normally go to the floor. The board bill, the board meetings are a very poor way to engage in dialogue and discussion. Because the purpose of the board meeting is to do the business of the school board. That's why we ask folks to come to committees and engage in a little bit more dialogue in that regard. So with that being said, if there are any other questions, debates?
Yeah, we do welcome let's talk. So.
Oh, yes, yes, please. Email, phone calls. Continue to stop me at Wegmans. I love it.
Sean only.
Yep. Then we'll call the question if there's no more. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all. We know there's a lot of work to be done. Thank you all. We know there's a lot of work to be done. We'll proceed from there. Um, our next agenda item is, uh, to return to executive session, should the board want that to take place. So we'll entertain motion.
Okay. I move to enter into executive session for matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person.
Moved by Adam, second by Jacob, all in favor? All opposed? Yeah, yep, understood. Uh, I also want to be clear, this will conclude, um, the business aspect of the board meeting. No additional agenda items will be discussed and no other voting items will happen this evening as well. We will close the meeting out by talking to our board clerk upon exiting from executive session. Thank you all very much.